Like to call the January 2nd meeting of Gloucester County Board of Supervisors to order. Ms. Steele, will you call the roll?
Mr. Bizani?
Here.
Mr. Crisco?
Here.
Mr. Gibson?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Nikosia?
Here.
Dr. Orth?
Mr. Smith?
Here.
All right, would you all join me in invocation and Pledge of Allegiance by Daniel McKee, Lighthouse Worship Center?
Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year.
Lord, we come to you today and we just dedicate this year to you. Lord, this brand-new year that we're a part of. Lord, we pray today that your will and your way be done in this board and in this community. Lord, I pray for a clarified vision and unity for the purposes of our residents in this community. And, Lord, we will give you all the glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
All right, ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next, we'll move to Ms. Steele for the election of the board officers for this year.
Thank you. As the first order of business, the board will elect a chair for 2024. Nominations do not require a second, and in the event of multiple nominees, the votes will be undertaken in the order of nomination with the first to achieve majority support declared chair. At this time, the floor is open for nominations for chair.
Yes, ma'am chair. I move to elect Mr. Hudson as our chair for the upcoming year.
Are there any other nominations? If there are no other nominations at this time, the floor is closed for nominations. I'll now poll the board for the adoption of the resolution. It's in your board packet, appointing Mr. Hudson as chair. And obviously, the order on this is different than usual, so it's throwing me off and it'll throw you off as well. It's because it's the first meeting of the year. Mr. Crisco?
No.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
I'm staying.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Dr. Orth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Congratulations. And the next order of business is to elect a vice chair for 2024. Nominations do not require a second, and in the event of multiple nominees, the vote will be undertaken in the order of nominations with the first to achieve majority support declared vice chair. At this time, the floor is open for nominations for vice chair.
Mr. Chair, I nominate Mr. Ashley Crisco for vice chair.
I nominate Kevin Smith for vice chair.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, there are no other nominations at this time. The floor is closed for nominations and we'll poll in the order received. So the first motion would be for Mr. Ashley Crisco to be vice chair. Mr. Gibson?
No.
Mr. Hudson?
No.
Mr. Nikosia?
No.
Dr. Orth?
No.
Mr. Smith?
Oh.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
And Mr. Crisco?
Stay.
Okay, we're gonna move to the next motion would be to elect Kevin Smith as vice chair. Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Dr. Orth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Stay.
Mr. Crisco?
No.
And Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Congratulations for appointed vice chair. And I think at this point, I turn the meeting over to you if I'm correct.
Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes, July 18th, August 1st, and August 15th.
Sub move.
Second.
Next item is the adoption of the agenda. We're gonna add. All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is adoption of the agenda. We're gonna, we're gonna add a closed meeting towards the end. Does anybody can make a motion?
Sub move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is approval of the consent agenda.
Sub move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is matters presented by the board.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Bizani.
I could take two or three minutes for everybody's time. Happy New Year, everybody. Hope you guys had a Merry Christmas, those people watching on television tonight. This evening, I want to underscore the importance of preserving our rural character that defines the very soul of our county. We find ourselves really at a crossroads where progress and tradition must coexist harmoniously. I committed, since I've been elected to this office, to championage this delicate balance and ensuring that our county flourishes economically while retaining its unique identity. It's a land of life worth living. I moved to Gloucester because of that. I want to continue to do that as well. But in order to do that, we shouldn't tax and burden the citizens of this county. Attracting business is integral to our county's growth and prosperity. It brings opportunities, jobs, and a vibrant economy. County must partner with its business partners to help fund and support our county and help the taxpayer. But however we forge ahead, we must be mindful of our roots and the distinctive charm that makes our county a cherished home for us, for us all. And our rural character is not just a backdrop, it is the heart of our community. And we must welcome businesses that contribute to our economy that without compromising the very essence of what makes us who we are. In pursuit of progress, capital projects associated with county and school infrastructure and essential services are probably the lifeblood of the community, but spending in these areas must be done when there's an absolute need to purr. And we must approach these projects with fiscal responsibility, ensuring that every dollar spent is a wise investment in our overall future. Unnecessary spending burdens all of us and threatens the very foundation of our financial stability. Our federal government's spending tax dollars like drunken sailors, draining the life of the American citizen, including our county residents, really enough is enough. So this year, I want to reiterate my commitment to being allowed, and everybody who knows me, I'm probably one of the loudest ones on the board here, a loud and vocal advocate for fiscal prudence. I'll scrutinize every proposed expenditure, questioning its necessity and its impact on our community. I will demand a cost-benefit analysis for any spending project that occurs. Our citizens clearly spoke in the referendum last, last year, expressing a very clear desire to see their hard-earned dollars allocated to projects that truly benefit the many and not just the few. The costs clearly outweighed the benefit, and the voters knew it. I will stand with them, holding our government accountable, ensuring that we remain faithful stewards of public funds. One of the most pressing issues that I will aim to address, and I'm gonna do this with the help of my colleagues, and with the hopeful support of my colleagues, is the financial real estate tax burden on our elderly citizens. Many of them have dedicated their lives to our community, paying taxes and contributing to its growth. It's only just that in their golden years, we should provide them with some relief. Later this year, after we adopt our budget, I will introduce a plan for a means-tested real estate tax relief for our elderly citizens. They have paid their dues, and it's time for us to give some of it back. Details to come soon that I will share soon with my colleagues before presenting publicly and to the board. In conclusion, let's embark on a journey of responsible growth, fiscal prudence, and compassion for our elderly citizens. Together, I believe we can build a future that honors our past, embraces our present, and ensures a legacy of prosperity for generations to come. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bizani. Anyone else? I'd like to read a statement. To clarify some information on the bond referendum and the county's fund balance, to address comments that were made at the last board meeting and in a recent letter to the editor. The situation that exists today is the same as we discussed at numerous public meetings last year. From the first borrowing scenario presented by Davenport Financial at the May 2nd meeting of the board, and each modified version after, there was always listed an option to borrow less money and fund the fire and rescue projects in fiscal year 25 without requiring a tax increase. The board decided to move forward with the referendum after discussing about the desires for having facilities available as soon as feasible. The additional expenses that would result from delaying the projects, and because of some of the proposed projects, would not be funded for more than a decade without a tax increase. Never have the county staff or majority of the board of supervisors represented that the county had cash in the bank to fund these projects. Cash in the bank would have made all these matters much easier, and I wish we did have the cash available. It appears that some members of the public are confused over the differences of funding projects without needing to raise taxes and funding projects with cash. The county has a fund balance policy that was unanimously approved and has been maintained for years. The fund balance is a moving target depending upon the time of year. Excess funds over the required reserve level are generally used for the following year's smaller capital projects and don't require financing. In the most recent, in the most recent financial presentation on the audited fiscal year 2023 results, it was explained that we have $2.6 million unassigned fund balance for use above our fund policy. The county utilizes Davenport Public Finance for their expertise and objectivity. The county also hires an independent accounting firm to conduct its annual audit. The accusation that county administrator or board members misrepresented the county's financial situation is not true. The board has openly expressed its support for the fire and rescue projects and will be considering how and when that will be possible during this year's budget process. Anyone else like to speak? Mr. Crisco?
I just wanna thank Mr. Hudson. Ms. Steele, we haven't heard anything back from our conversation a couple weeks ago yet, have we?
We were told we will hear by the end of this week.
Perfect, that's, I was just curious.
We checked on them again.
That's all, thanks.
Dr. Orth?
I know some of us are, have been re-elected, but I want to welcome Mr. Nikosia as the newest member of our board. Welcome.
Very good.
And we look forward to work together. And I will say this, I wasn't gonna say it, but I figure I might as well. I've been on the board for 12 years, and I've thoroughly enjoyed working with all of you. I look forward to the next four years. We all come from different backgrounds. We have different thoughts and ideas about how we want to help the county, but I think in general, we all want to do what's best for the county. Mr. Bizani, I look forward to your proposal with regard to helping the seniors. We do try to do the best, but I'd like to look forward to what you present. And, you know, I, I know we disagree on a number of issues. Our votes have been anywhere from 7-0 to 4-3, but that says a lot about the fact that we are different and we approach things differently. And it's good to have dissension, not why I want dissension, but it's good to have discussion, spirited discussion, and when we leave, we leave as colleagues. Thank you.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes, you make a great point, Dr. Orth. I would like to maybe add that as a topic for our retreat, Mr. Bizani, and maybe fast-forward it to this year if we have the ability to. We may have to have the Commissioner of Revenue in at a work session to pull that off, but I think if we can, the sooner we can do that, the better off we'll be.
All right. Next item on the agenda are county administrator items.
Well, Happy New Year again, and I would like to thank our utility staff. Several of them came out and handled an emergency on New Year's Eve, and we had a major or significant water leak on Main Street, which impacted a number of residents and businesses. And we had staff who came off of their leave from a fishing trip to come in and get everything settled, and it wasn't easy. It took many hours, so we appreciate them coming in on their time off.
Can I just say one thing?
Yes, sir.
You know, I watched, or didn't watch, I went by that several times, and the pieces of equipment that we funded, they were put to good use. And I do want to thank Ms. Katie Lake. She kept on top of the entire project as it was moving forward, trying to get the people in. And I think it was a tough job, but they were there until almost 9:00 o'clock at night. And we were very lucky that they were able to get a crash truck that night, because they're hard to get. And think about New Year's Eve, trying to find a crash truck to direct traffic. So they, we owe them a debt of gratitude for, you know, solving a significant issue that could have been serious for especially the people at Main Street Landing, not having water at New Year's Day.
And we appreciate the assistance from VDOT, who obviously had to work on their New Year's Eve also to help get us that crash truck. And it's been mentioned before how we need to buy the attachment and make our own, and hope that can happen in the future. I passed out, and we'll make this public as it's a draft. These, this is not the minutes. These are the sort of summary and action steps from the retreat, and this will be the, what we work off of that at the next retreat, addressing the strategic priorities and specific steps of what to do for the next three years. So I would greatly appreciate if you would take a look and within, say, a week, if you have any edits, comments that you would like to make corrections or anything, please let me know. And again, this will be shared with staff as we prepare the next round, which will be the draft of all the priorities and tasks. And we have the authority to do public hearings when we need to advertise for them, and we normally come and ask the board ahead of time, but I just wanted to give you a heads-up on one of these standard ones, that we have a renewal lease for the senior center, that we lease the building that's owned to them to Bay Aging, it's owned by the county, to Bay Aging. And we wanted to make the deadline for the next meeting, and that required us to advertise so that if you see that advertisement, we went ahead and went forward with it. And I believe that's all I have tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Steele, Dr. Orth said that Ms. Lake was there going over everything for the water leak. She's Parks and Rec. Explain that, Lord.
I think the board knows a little bit of insider information. Our Utilities Director retired on December 31st, and we've known of his retirement coming for a number of months and have been recruiting but have not found any viable candidates at this point. So we've branched out to a headhunter firm to help bring in people. It's very hard to get folks for almost any job, but especially one that's that technical. And so we were left with the situation of having 37, 38 employees in a multiple-division department that cannot be left on its own, and thankfully, knew that we could bring in Ms. Lake, who would not let Parks and Rec suffer because she's got a good substitute with her second-in-command. And so moved Katie up to the Interim Director of Utilities, and Matt Barber to the Interim Director of Parks, Rec, and Tourism. So she started training with Mr. Dawson and becoming familiar with things the last couple of weeks of December, and hit with a surprise leak first, almost first day on the job. She worked through the weekend over in the office, getting ready for starting over there. She is an excellent supervisor, and everybody, it's been explained to the staff as we've met with them, nobody's expecting Katie to be an expert on utilities. She's an expert in leadership and getting things done and, and process improvements. So she's agreed to be over there in an interim position, and we're very thankful for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, scheduled presentations, Open Broadband Update. Eric Beach, Mr. Beach?
Good evening. Eric Beach, Chief Information Officer for Gloucester. As requested by the board and one of our previous meetings in the fall, we have Open Broadband, our wireless, or our fixed wireless provider here in the county, to give us an update on our Open Broadband project.
Well, for those of you who don't know me, and a few of you do, I'm Greg Reed. I'm the area supervisor for Open Broadband here in Gloucester and Matthews. I'm a county resident, third generation in the house that my grandparents built back in '54, so I do have some history in the county, although I haven't lived here the entire time. So just to go over a little bit, some of this is relayed by Alan Fitzpatrick, the CEO, that the project as, basically as laid out was to construct a citizens' band radio system, get the gear on two towers, align those towers towards the underserved areas of, as designated, in Gloucester, up in the Salem Church area, and in Matthews, in the North River area, along the North River there. So we've done those two towers. We installed Nokia equipment initially, found that those pieces of equipment underperformed against what we were, we were, or they advertised, we were told about. So we replaced that equipment with a brand called Torana, which is really the first generation of equipment that has been designed from the ground up as a product for fixed wireless. Everything up until now has been sort of converting or making use of cell technology to try and be broadband. And this Torana equipment was put up at the expense of Open Broadband. Didn't ask for any additional funding for that. The Torana is much more capable in terms of bandwidth, speed for an individual, which is not always the best thing to judge internet service by, but it's, it's what customers know. That's what all of them, they do speed tests to find out. And so we're able to provide 100 by 20, sometimes more than that, depending on the location and how much, much obstruction we may have between the towers and the, the individual home. Those CPEs, the individual antenna that's mounted on the home, are considerably more expensive than what we had initially planned for. They run upwards of five times what the initial product was, but again, they are what's designed from the ground up to be for fixed wireless broadband. And really, other than occasionally when the Navy takes our spectrum, so to speak, when they decide they're gonna use some of the bandwidth, the frequencies that are supposed to be assigned to this residential fixed wireless, other than that, we've had really good performance. The speeds, again, are, are much above the 25.3 that was the initial requirement of the VODI grants. We're also planning, as we've talked about previously in the previous meeting, to have a third tower installed to try and cover an area that, that we're not getting to with the initial tower off of landfill. So we're trying to put a tower up, and Kent will address more of this when he speaks here in a moment. I, I call it the backside, if you want to call it that, of the VODI area, but this tower is along 198, near the Thousand Trails area, and will broadcast across Turks Ferry and that backside of 198 up towards, towards Glens. Excuse me, try not to say um. One of the things we're concerned about, but it's, it's something that we'll have to take into account as we do that, is whether that third tower is going to encroach on any of the incumbent areas, because that's one of the things that you have to worry about with this fixed wireless, is are you stepping on anybody's toes? But again, that's something that we'll have to deal with as we move forward.
Actually, if I could address that right now?
Sure.
Kent Winrick, I'm CTO and co-owner of Open Broadband. This tower that we're putting up, it's a Verizon tower up near Thousand Trails. We're, we're doing that not with funding from the grant, so we're doing it out of our own money, so it doesn't really affect, because it's not grant-related, though we are going to be covering people in the grant, it's not grant-related because we're putting our own money into it, and therefore it should not affect any conflicts with it. Yes, sir.
So when you say you're putting up a tower, but you mentioned Verizon, is the tower already up?
Sorry, I was, yes, it is.
So the tower's up?
Yeah, sorry.
So this, okay, I just want to make sure it's clear that there is already a tower there. You just started working with Verizon?
Correct.
To get the, I guess, approval to put your equipment on that tower?
Right. We've already submitted the application for it. They've already picked a height for us, so we're moving right along with this. So I, I can cover that as well, but I wanted to make sure that we are clear that we are not going to be going against what the grant rules are because we're providing our own money to do that tower. I'll just send it back to Greg.
Mr. Bizani?
May I ask a couple of questions, Mr. Beach? I heard, I heard you say that the new equipment's five times more expensive than the old one, old ones that you? So how's that gonna impact not only the VODI grant, how does that impact your cost structure? Are you gonna be coming back and asking the county to, to fund more of this project?
No, we're not.
You're not? Is the new equipment in?
Oh, yes, definitely.
And you are currently installing it?
Yes.
Yeah, we've been, we've been putting that in since the, the first tower was converted at the end of September. So we had the equipment here already in the trailers that the county provides for us. But yeah, we've been putting it in since the end of September. Some negatives that we've found along the way, and I think we've talked about this in the VODI calls that we've had with Carol and with the Matthews folks, is that the take rate, or the, the people who are actually signing up for the service, is lower than, than certainly we had hoped, probably lower than, than we anticipated would be the low side. Judy, Judy Rowe over in Matthews, who also works with the wired customer over there, the wired provider, she said that they told her that they anticipate less than 25% take rate when they run cable into an area, that that's their numbers. It's, it's less than 25%. We're getting less than that. We're probably getting around 14% right now, and that's a very disappointing number for us. Anything, anybody has suggestion-wise to help us with that, we are definitely all ears. And believe it or not, people aren't necessarily pulling or picking the highest bandwidth that we have. There are not that many people who've taken the 100 megabit per second download speed that we offer. I'd say that on average, it's, it's 50. We have some that are at 25, some that are at 100, but most people are taking 50. And I haven't had anybody complaining, haven't had anybody that wanted to increase their speed package. We did have one in Matthews that decreased. Yes, sir.
So how many people are now getting broadband with this new equipment?
In Gloucester, right now, we have 16 customers, six of which are in the VODI area. And then in Matthews, we have 25 customers, and they're all in the VODI area. And...
Question.
So, I think that's about all I was gonna say.
What do you predict will be the total build-out and acceptance rate for this new system once it's fully installed? Are you saying it's gonna be 25% for 100% of your cost putting it in? How, how are you gonna make your money back if no one hardly, you know, no one wants to sign up for it?
Well, that would be a problem. If, if no one wants to sign up for it, it certainly is.
But let's say 20, let's say 14 or 25%, you know, sign up and the 75% do not, how does that impact your, well, it's none of my business, but you know, is that gonna?
It just extends out our ROI.
Yeah.
So I mean, we'll have a way to do it, just that we won't have as quick as an ROI as we would have liked.
So you'll have a satisfactory ROI on, on, once this is all said and done? You predict that, right?
Yeah, we'll also continue to... Yeah, we'll also continue to push. We've all, if you take this mantra of it takes eight touches to get through to somebody. Touch means, you know, a card or a contact or something in the news or something like that. And we've, I would think we maybe have done three. So we're going to continue to do, you know, cards and contacts of one way or another. Yes, sir.
So in the other places where you have broadband, what was the initial take rate? And had that changed over the time period that when you started and now in full operation in places in North Carolina that you are operating?
Our take rate in some of the counties are close to 50%. And I really don't, I just, I don't have a good explanation as to why there's a lower take rate here. But it's, it is what it is. And we'll just continue to keep working on it in our marketing to get that word out. And continuing on, we did decide to make the move up to the 100 meg plus service so that we're future-proofed in the county. We could have done, stuck with the 25, but we just didn't, we'd rather have been, put it in and leave and have it in there for an extended amount of time. Yes, sir.
So of the people that aren't taking it, do we have any indication as to perhaps why they're not taking it? I mean, is it cost? Is it they don't understand how this broadband is going to work or what? I mean, you know, I mean, we have heard from citizens over and over that they want broadband.
Right.
You know, to have the numbers that you're telling us, to me, is pretty low. I thought that'd be such a demand that people would be knocking at your door.
But I think it's a multiple of reasons. I won't tell you that we haven't had somebody push back on costs. We did have one lady that just said what she had was about $29 a month, and I think that was just the low-end Verizon hotspot, so to speak, and she didn't even want to pay the $49 for the 25 mips. Most of them are people that are just content with what they've got. They're, they don't use it that much. They haven't been going over their data plan. You know, whether these are people that never communicated that when the surveys were done about whether you want broadband or not. But one of the things that I've seen is that in Matthews particularly, and I know it's from Carol's aspect, it's important because she's administering the entire VOTI grant. It's not as much of a thing here in Gloucester. But in Matthews, they have so many people that these are vacation homes that they don't really care that much about having a broadband connection 24/7. So, sure. I mean, in defense of open broadband, we get quite a few calls at the office every week for where we are on open broadband. And I can tell you that the majority of those calls are coming south of the VOTI North area. And I feel pretty positive about the take rate increasing as we move farther south. I think that population is more technologically ready for it and where the citizens live out north, and I'm not saying this is for everybody up there, but they want to be up there for a reason. And they don't necessarily want internet, but I think as we move through the county, we're going to see that take rate increase.
Well, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gibson, were you ever contacted by open broadband?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay. And I mean, you...
Well, and really, we've been focusing on the VOTI areas right now, just to make sure we're taking care of that. And have you been contacted? We may not have been, and so that's something that's on us to make sure we do that. Now, let me make something very clear is that though we may be disappointed in the original numbers right now, we are here, we're going to stay here, and we're going to continue to do this. We're not going anywhere. We are going to make this happen. So we've been focusing on getting the VOTI areas. We still have to get this third tower up because we need to cover more of the VOTI area. But we're going to start expanding. Once we get that third tower up, then we're going to start expanding in the other areas as well. So there is a plan to make this happen. We're just, we're trying to focus on making sure we checked off the body boxes.
Mr. Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Winrick and Mr. Reed, I appreciate you being here. You're in a difficult position, kind of like going up to the teacher. You haven't done your homework because we're in year three now. We're in year three, and we've got 16 people signed up for your service. And six VOTI, isn't there approximately 100, over 100, 180 VOTI households? Is that in mind, ballpark?
131, I think, in Gloucester, 183 or something like that in Matthews.
Okay, so six of 131. And, you know, I hear the frustration that you're not having the signups, and you're talking about you need eight touches to procure or to attract those signups. But I recall, and the chair touched on this, where you said, "We're going to rectify this, we're going to reach out, we're going to have contact with those who've signed up." And since that meeting, nothing. I've heard nothing, not an email, nothing about the update on your service. You also promised the completion of the VOTI households by December 31st. I think that's unfortunately, that didn't happen either. So you're making a lot of promises, like you did back in 2021, to provide this service to the county, but we're here in year three and we're not much closer. So what's going to be done to improve the communication with those who've signed up and improve the marketing to the county to generate interest in your service?
We're putting things on our Facebook page. We're trying to make social media posts on what's happening with everything. I'm open to any other ideas as far as other than mailings, because we're doing that as well. You may not have received it yet, but they'll be coming.
You mentioned that the new technology that you've moved to increased the cost for the homeowner five times. Who's bearing that cost for the consumer?
We are. It doesn't, it doesn't affect the homeowner at all.
What is your best estimate for the completion of the, well, it'd be 125 remaining VOTI homes in Gloucester?
Well, I think to cover the rest of the VOTI, we need that third tower, which we're doing at our own expense.
When do you estimate completion on the third tower?
We pushed it out to, we made an estimate to the state of April. We're hoping to move it quicker than that. We're presently in conversations with the Verizon Tower people right now. Equipment could be had, it's just a matter of completing that agreement for the Verizon Tower. They've already given us a site location on the tower as far as height goes, so we're moving right along.
And once the VOTI residents are served, then when is the estimated completion date for the entire? When would service be available to the entire county?
So I think...
We're really not going to hit every single home in the county. That was, that I don't think was ever a plan.
Right, I mean, we had to, within the grant numbers, we had to stay within specific areas. If we had put in our own money like this third tower, we can go beyond that. So that's what we're doing.
So the completion of the third tower is only going to serve the VOTI residents?
No, it's going to serve other people as well.
So what geographic area is going to be served once this third tower is, or third antenna is completed on the existing tower?
It's an area, it's an area, right now, we're looking at two antennas to go up. One, it would pretty much parallel 198 up towards Glens. And then the other one, as I recall, was at a
South, southwest.
South, southwest, something like that. So it would push over into the area between where that tower is on 198 and towards the Beaver Dam Tower, so in that direction. And there's potential for locating others if we need to on that tower. You can put four, I mean, basically four covers a 360-degree area. The question's going to be whether there's enough residents in the area that express an interest for us to add the additionals. There's a couple of subdivisions over there, and excuse me, I cannot remember the names of them. There's one, it's an older subdivision over on the water. And then out in front of that is a, I almost had the name, sorry, a new one that we would be able to cover. We'd be able to cover, I think, the Thousand Trails campground. So that would, because right now, they have nothing and they're...
Right, but those aren't necessarily permanent residents, and I represent the permanent residents. I mean, I certainly would love to serve the campground, but the permanent residents of Petsworth, the northern district of Gloucester County, is the most underserved area for broadband in the county. And I get calls regularly asking when your service is going to be implemented. And so there is a huge, huge need. And so I'm very concerned by what I'm hearing tonight that you're not quite clear on whether the Petsworth district is going to be served by your service.
Well, the entire Petsworth district is not VOTI. There's only the 130 homes-ish that are VOTI, and those do fall inside, I think, entirely in your district, if I'm not mistaken.
The vast majority do.
Yeah, but there's a lot more customer, I mean, excuse me, residents, your constituents that are not VOTI customers. And those will get some coverage as well from the two horns that were up there. And if it looks like we need to add others because of unavailability of other things for them, then we can certainly do that as the business case presents itself.
Mr. Smith.
Yes, sir, thank you, gentlemen. Have you guys done any advertising in our local newspaper?
Not, not yet.
I mean, because along with that, I mean, I'm not very smart, I know that. Most people have cell phones. So two things. If you're trying to get broadband to them, they might not have internet, correct? More likely?
Their phone.
So why are you advertising on Facebook?
Because everybody's using their cell phones.
But then, I mean, then my next, I agree, but you need to look at it from the point of view, you need to look at other avenues to approach people.
Yes.
And I just look at it, and I'm sitting there thinking, and I'm going to go back to Mr. Bazzani buying a car. We're going to buy it, we're not going to get it for six years. If you need a car today, are you going to wait three years for it? Are you going to look elsewhere? That's probably why your take rate is not where it should be. It's been waiting forever.
Yeah, there are certainly some customers who have found other means. There's no question about that.
Mr. Bazzani.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let's talk about the VOTI grant. I'm concerned right now because I would surmise your CFO is not a happy camper right now. I would think so, with the low uptake you're getting on, you know, of the existing projects you do have up online. When you applied, did we apply for the VOTI grant?
Yes.
With their assistance? What was their projection of uptake when we applied for the VOTI grant?
I believe we expected 60% at the time.
Is there, I haven't seen what the VOTI grant looked like, but is there a risk that if the uptake is not as high as it should or projected, that there'll be a clawback from the state?
I did ask the state to make sure that there's not.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Crisco.
You have the certainty that you'll have this done before your extension that you requested?
That's our plan, yes.
That extension is April?
Yes.
Any more questions? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Next item on the agenda, citizen comment period. Please come forward, state your name, magisterial district, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Oh, I know it's not, he's on start. Oh, I'm sorry.
Now they can hear you, Happy New Year.
Thank you, to all of you. Two weeks ago, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Ms. Steele, Mr. Wilmont, Howard Mallory York. Two weeks ago, having nothing to do, I decided to go to the Beaver Dam Park. Picked up my spot in a handicapped area, and lo and behold, on exit, I drove into a sand pit. After maneuvering around, I made it to the office. Our employee was most helpful in answering all my questions. Being bored again, I went to the budget books and found where there was an item in the CIP Pago section for paving and striping. This was six years ago, and we are still not fully ADA compliant at this site. Again, being bored, I revisited the site, and guess what preparations are being taken to become completely ADA compliant? The squeaky wheel gets the oil. A review of all county government properties needs to be reviewed and become compliant with this upcoming fiscal year, fully funded and not with Pago or a fund balance. Immediate action is also required by this board for the private organization, the Gloucester Volunteer and Fire Rescue Services. Land was purchased for a new building. Funding was discussed, and a referendum vote failed at the past election. They have legitimate needs to support a new building. They do support this county and the surrounding counties in times of emergency. Now the kicker, this is a private organization. Without sufficient funds to operate, they can shut down. This is not a threat. By any means. The county citizens generously provide an annual tax donation of approximately $1.3 million for operations and maintenance in the annual budget, plus the donations given freely by the citizens and other organizations. This firehouse provides safety to maintain our property in an emergency. Consider approximately 19,000 residents and $2 billion in real property and businesses. These are estimates. Think about the true figures. Think about people dying, structures burning down, the bell is not answered. Who is responsible? The issue tonight is to hash out the particulars and put an RFB on the street. The building process, the bidding process will determine the amount of the debt process. The citizens are looking for a reasonable cost that meets the needs of the pre-approved contract specification requirements to accomplish the task at hand. What say this new sitting board? If this private organization were go-for-paid, the cost of real or individual property could be raised approximately 23 cents on 100 to offset any shortages to support a paid function of the county no longer volunteer. My last item is most interesting, the financial condition of the county. Our treasurer, a state-elected official, is the controller of our funds, revenue, and expenditures with a cosigner by our administrator or our financial director. Reviewing two years of records between June 30, 23, and June 30, 22, available general fund cash checking accounts, Truist and Chester Bay. The ending in real money was 29.7 mil and 30.2 mil, a $5 million increase in revenue collections. Additionally, looking at the same years at the end of the first half fiscal year, available cash was 27 and 29.7 million, up 2.7 million. The cash collection for this December 23 should be sufficient to partially fund the new firehouse and still meet all obligations to the end of the fiscal year. Another sticking point is a non-existent 14% to 16% emergency reserve. Can this be removed from the general fund now and put in escrow? Additionally, what is not provided by the administration or the treasurer is the cost of wages, benefits, and monthly operations. We are financially sound, but in an emergency, we are bankrupt. There is no reserve funding in place to meet that need. The fund balance is a tax increase associated with each new budget. I thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Mallory. Would anyone else like to come up and speak? Last call. All right, we'll close the citizen comment period. I've already asked. There's no public hearings, we'll move to the regular agenda. Ms. Callaway, it's a request for additional fiscal year 2024 appropriations.
Good evening. So this evening, I'm here to request an appropriation for the Gloucester and Matthews Care Clinic. As a result of the clinic changing locations and also a delay in the submission of their application for tax exemption, they've been assessed additional real estate taxes. So this request would take the additional real estate taxes that they've been assessed, and it's asking to provide that back to them in the form... It's a net wash, and there's no negative effect on the current budget. Happy to answer any questions you may have, or there is a resolution on your, on page sixty-four of your board packet.
Mr. Bizani.
Mr. Chair, do you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Forty-two thousand eight hundred and thirties, are they gonna include that in their ask for this upcoming fiscal year?
I, I haven't, I don't believe so. I haven't double-checked their fiscal year twenty-five ask, but no, I don't anticipate that.
I have a hard time understanding. So, are they short, are they gonna be short financially because they didn't budget correctly for the upcoming budget, because we gave them what they asked for last year?
This is an additional assessment, so they're, they're being assessed for back years in taxes, so we're asking to, to fund that for them. So, we're just gonna take what they're gonna pay us and, and, and give that back to them.
If I can, Mr. Chair. So, they're one of our approved tax-exempt organizations. They are currently up to date. You all recently just renewed their tax-exempt status, but there was a problem several years ago when they moved to their new site, and so they were charged real estate taxes because they had not filed again. And so, this is a request to not punish them for not, for the process that occurred, and it, and it did involve the previous commissioner revenues off, you know, the previous commissioner revenue, our process, which we've improved on now, because each of these organizations that asked to be tax-exempt have to refile and request. It's not like a lifetime, so every three years they have to come in. We're now notifying, making sure. So, there was a lapse in these several years ago. It's beyond the ability to be waived, so they have to pay us this money. And what we're doing is saying, okay, this resolution would allow them to be even, and we're even. They pay us a check, and we give them an additional appropriation. It's all about real estate taxes.
Right, but when did they know that they had this deficit? When did they know it? Three years ago? Why, why weren't we informed before?
We were. We've been, we've had this discussion.
We've had this discussion.
This is just making it correct. This is just making it right. This is the, the final step, once we realized everything that had gone on. This is the final step to fix the miscommunication on both, both parts.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Absolutely, Mr. Wilmot.
Out of fairness to Mr., completeness to Mr. Bizani's question, answering it, what should have happened, see, what these property exemptions, they're property-specific. They're not organization-specific. So, when the care clinic was granted an exemption, they were granted an exemption for the property they then occupied. Well, they moved, and the then commissioner, the revenue, did not tax them on their new property, even though he should have and the new one should have. So, you've now granted, you've granted tax exemption for the previous property, and now you've granted tax exemption to the new property, but there's these couple of years or three years worth of taxes that should have been assessed on the new property. So, the mechanism to make it right is to let them pay us for the back taxes, which we are not allowed to waive, and then you to appropriate an equivalent amount to make up for that taxes. So, there's a lot of finger pointing that can be done, but what should have happened was the care clinic should have realized that they owed the taxes. The commissioner should have assessed those taxes, neither of which happened.
So, I hate to use the phrase, but did they drop the ball, some, either one side?
Both sides dropped the ball.
Both sides dropped the ball on this issue.
And, and if the ball had not been dropped, it wouldn't have been that they would have paid taxes. It would have been that they would have applied to have tax exemption at their new location. And if the board acted as you had previously and acted as you did a few months ago, they wouldn't have ever had to pay those taxes. They just, like I said, it was just kind of a, a mess.
Do we have any other situations like this now, other than the care clinic?
I, I certainly hope not, and I've sat and screamed to make that not happen.
Somebody dropped the ball. Is there a resolution on page sixty-four?
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Dr. Orth?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
You got the wrong name. Okay. Sorry.
Next item on the agenda is a discussion and approval of the resolution to adopt the board's twenty twenty-four rules of procedure, code of ethics, and standards of conduct.
I move we accept the resolution, Mr. Chair, unless anyone has a discussion.
Read the code of ethics, correct. Is there any discussion? Do you wanna adopt it before? Go ahead.
Oh, that's right, we have to read it.
I know. That's what I'm saying, do we wanna adopt it before I read it? We, okay, let's adopt it.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Dr. Orth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
It's not that we didn't know that you could read.
It's questionable sometimes. Yeah, I'm gonna hit play here in a second. The Code of Ethics, Gloucester County Board of Supervisors. Recognizing that persons who hold public office have been given a public trust, and that stewardship of such office demands the highest levels of ethical and moral conduct, members of Gloucester County Board of Supervisors agree to adhere to the following code of ethics. Uphold the Constitution, laws, and regulations of the United States and of all governments therein, and never knowingly be a party to their invasion. Put loyalty to the highest moral principles and to the county above loyalty to individuals or particular groups. Give a full measure of effort and service to the position of trust for which stewardship has been granted, giving earnest effort and best thought to the performance of duties. Seek to find and use the most equitable, efficient, effective, and economical means of getting tasks accomplished. Adopt policies and programs that support the rights and recognize the needs of all citizens regardless of race, sex, age, religion, creed, country of origin, or disability. Avoid speech, policies, programs, or activities that discriminate against or offend individuals because of race, age, sex, religion, creed, country of origin, or disability. Ensure the integrity of the actions of the board of supervisors by avoiding the dispensing of special favors or unfair privileges to anyone, whether for remuneration or not. A member shall never accept for himself, herself, or the family members, or friends, favors, or benefits that might be construed by reasonable persons as influencing the performance of governmental duties. Make no private promises of any kind binding upon the duties of any office, since a public servant has no private word that can be binding on public duty. Engage in no business with the county government or the school system, either directly or indirectly, which is inconsistent with the conscientious performance of government duties. Never use any information gained confidentially in the performance of governmental duties as a means of making a profit. When any misconduct, neglect of duty, or corruption is discovered, the members of the board as a body will pursue and respond appropriately. Adhere to the principles that the public's business should be conducted in the public view by observing and following the letter and spirit of the Freedom of Information Act. Use closed meetings only to deal with sensitive personnel, legal, or contractual matters as provided by the Code of Virginia. Avoid criticizing colleagues or citizens by impugning their integrity or vilifying their personal beliefs. Make sure when responding to the media that a clear distinction is made between personal opinion or belief and the position of the board. Review orally and in public session at the annual meeting each of these principles. Pledge to honor and uphold these principles, ever conscious that the public office is a public trust. Mr. Bizani.
I, I find it interesting that, that we as a board have to comply with FOIA requirements, but the state legislatures is not. I mean, they can talk amongst themselves, have a meeting, five or six delegates or senators, and, oh, yeah, and they don't have to comply, but counties do. I think that should be something we should pursue later on this year if we can.
Well, there are different things that, it could be worse for us. Just be prepared. No, it's possible. Okay, next item on the agenda is a discussion and a, excuse me? Do we? No, just a, no. Um, next item on the agenda is the discussion adoption of the board meeting schedule. Ms. Steele.
Uh, the schedule or the calendar is on page eighty-three, and nothing has changed since the adjustments that were made at the last meeting. So, it's there for your consideration with a resolution on page eighty-two.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Chair, I, I will note that I, I am out of town on April third. I don't wanna impede the work of the board, but I cannot attend the April third meeting. So, I just wanted to make the board aware of that.
That's a possible board.
We could strike it now if you wanted. I would gladly make that motion, Mr. Gibson. We can gladly strike it now, and we, it's already possible, but we don't have to have it. We can change it on the second, or we can change it on the twenty-seventh, but.
Or, or find an alternate day would be fine as well, so I just wanted the board to be aware. Thank you.
Is that the spring break?
That is.
It would, I think so too. We just strike it that week.
But we already have a board meeting on the second.
On the second? Oh, yeah.
Did we talk about doing this on a Saturday?
No, this is, this is.
It's just a calendar.
And I apologize, I should have learned my lesson last year, but, uh, yeah, the second is a problem as well. And I'm not in a position to change these plans at this point, so.
Okay, we'll have an empty seat on the second, no meeting on the third.
Okay.
I'll amend my motion to strike the third as a work session meeting.
Are you ready for the vote?
Just a second.
Okay.
Okay. All right, Ms. Steele. Yeah, we've already gotten a second on the amendment. Okay, somebody give us a second.
Second.
All right.
Dr. Orth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
I should carry.
Okay. What we'll do is go through, and we've got a bunch of resolutions that we will, um, we'll put, name all the names and just do one motion for all of them. Uh, so, we'll go to, what?
I went to use my mouse for a computer that doesn't work. Sorry.
Um, we'll start with, uh, Trish, I'm not going by the order that we have here for the resolutions, but, and I can send you this email. Um, we'll go with Board of Social Services, Mr. Crisco. Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, Mr. Bizani. Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organization, Mr. Bizani, with myself as an alternate. Hampton Roads Military and Federal Facilities Alliance, Mr. Bizani. Library Board of Trustees, Dr. Orth. Middle Peninsula Alliance, Mr. Crisco. Middle Peninsula Planning District Commission, uh, Mr. Crisco and Mr. Nikosia. Planning Commission, myself, and Northern Neck Regional Jail, uh, Mr. Smith. Do we need that alternate now? Have you confirmed that or not?
I emailed and was not given a response, and the minutes from the last meeting are still not available.
Okay, what we're gonna.
I would assume that's a yes.
For the alternate for that, we're gonna, have you?
I can serve.
Okay. Mr. Gibson.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
One question. Could, uh, how was it, Jim? Dr. Orth, would you like to take the HR PNC? Let's see what else he has on the, on the.
Okay. You have everything you had last time.
So, utilities.
That's nice. All it's gonna do is interfere with some fishing. Once a month.
There are a few.
I'll help you out.
Okay.
I'll be an alternate.
We don't need alternates for that.
Okay.
Is that the same day as?
Yes, there are other localities that are closer where they'll have people trade off, but the, there's the first meeting, then lunch, and then the second meeting.
That's right, there is on the same, I can do that, I can do that. I'm gonna be there anyway. Fine, I'm sorry. Misunderstood.
Then, the RONFA meeting is, if you were, that was the other one that you're assigned to. That one is.
That was thrown at me last time.
And that, that's a, uh, I think they are somewhere between nine and twelve meetings a year.
Okay. Good, good, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So, do we want to, oh, we'll do them all at one time.
Sure.
Um, Plan and Green, Dr. Orth. Community Policy and Management Team, Mr. Crisco. Economic Development Authority, Dr. Orth. Historical Committee, Mr. Gibson. Local Emergency Planning Committee, uh, Mr. Crisco and Mr. Nikosia. Middle Peninsula Public Bay, Public Access Authority, uh, myself and Mr. Crisco. Middle Peninsula Criminal Justice Board, Mr. Smith. Parks and Recreation, Mr. Gibson. Utilities Advisory Committee, Dr. Orth. Tourism Committee, Mr. Gibson. Um, that's all I can appoint. The rest of you, you want me to read them?
We have all of yours in.
Well, we need to do hers, too. You want some help, Carol? Ms. Steele?
Yes, please.
Um, uh, Committee, uh, Community Use of School Facilities, uh, myself and Mr. Smith. Floodplain Management Planning, Mr. Crisco. Hazard Mitigation Management Team, if needed, Mr. Smith. Transportation Planning Advisory Committee, Mr. Hudson, myself. Um, and we were looking at possibly somebody to add to that. It's two thirty.
I did suggest at the retreat if you wanted to have a, a second person come to that meeting, because transportation is such a vital issue in the county.
Okay, Dr. Orth, sold.
Right down the road.
So, that's all of us.
Thank you for your assistance.
One more comment, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bizani.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna ask my colleagues that we can probably discuss, well, if you want to discuss this, the, the development of an internal audit group committee to, um, you know, the federal government has the GAO, an Office of Management and Budget, and the GAO oversees internally audits all spending for the federal government. The state has, also has an internal audit function. I was wondering if we have a citizen committee that would be, if you guys are interested to have, you know, internal audits of our processes and our financials in the county so that we get a report back once a quarter, um, and not to, you know, it's just a, it's just a backup way of looking, another way of looking through the window. Most businesses have one. We had one at Newpernue Ship. Is that something would you guys be interested in talking about in the retreat?
It's something we can discuss at the retreat.
Okay.
Are we even in a work session?
Sure. Thank you.
Ms. Cronin, I'll email you these tomorrow. Um, so, we need to vote on these?
Second.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Dr. Orth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Next item is, um, approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty-five travel amount to be budgeted for each board member. Ms. Steele.
Yes, this is normally, the board adopts this and does it, usually does a percentage of dividing, but this would be for the FY twenty-five budget year. Under the current year, there's forty-two hundred dollars, but it's however the board would like to. would like to.
For the, for the whole board's forty-two hundred?
Yes, and this is not your personal travel reimbursements, this is your training type if you go to a conference.
Everybody good with, all right, there's a resolution on page one oh four. All in favor? All right. Actually, it's a resolution. Ms. Steele, will you poll the board?
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Dr. Orth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next item is board appointments. We've got Willie Grant wants to be reappointed. You okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Historical Committee, Mr. Gibson.
We do not have a candidate.
Okay, Tourism Committee, Wilbur Flores wants to be.
Make the motion to reappoint, Mr. Flores.
And we also have, for the recreational, we have a Nicole Williams.
If I can make that one, I will make that as well.
Mm-hmm. It's any. Okay, Dr. Orth, utilities?
Well, I've seen the, 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 was it, the, what is it? You, you sent me the thing. I think we need to look at ways of changing this board because trying.
Requirements of membership?
Yeah, requirements of membership.
It's currently, the bylaws indicate, bylaws are approved by the board supervisors, they, they require membership by district for some positions. We're having difficulty filling those positions because of the requirement that they be filled, at least in part, by districts. So you may want to look at, perhaps it's a retreat item, where you might want to consider the, the requirements attended to membership of that.
Yeah, I mean, utilities is a really important committee and you want people that really understand utilities, and I think it might be worthwhile to look at the bylaws and how we adjust, you know, the membership because I've been to a lot of meetings and most times we can barely get a quorum. If we can get people there that are really interested regardless of the district, I think would really help the utilities committee. That's just a thought.
No, it was, it's always been difficult, even when I searched on the committee to find people, so yeah.
And, and it's sad because you get the people coming and then somebody says, well, I can't make it, then we don't have a quorum and business can't get conducted. I think it's really important that we find people who really have an interest in utilities because it is such an important, you know, component of this county.
Okay. Next, we have Wetlands Board in Chesapeake.
May I make a nomination?
Yes.
I'll discuss it with this individual, but Mr. Dislu, for the Wetland Board.
Okay, we have some people on the list.
Okay, I didn't. That's fine. It is, William Pickens would be at large, he's currently at large, and he lives in where?
You have Chip Nykirk who worked for the state, or Robert C. Nykirk, excuse me.
He worked at VMRC.
He worked at VMRC, and he could be at large. And then the other one would be an alternate, would be, if you wanted to hold off and talk to Chris Lee or Ron Owens.
Okay.
We, we could hold those two off, hold that one off, but we could leave the alternate off and move those two around, if that's okay with you, Mr. Nikosia. We're taking, we're stealing your thunder tonight.
We're not following that.
So we'll do those two. So is there a motion for these?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the county attorney items.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, it's a pleasure to be here. I'm going to give this one more shot. Recently driving around the county, it's appalling the amount of trash that's been deposited by travelers ostensibly along the sides of the roadways. Localities in the Commonwealth are authorized pursuant to Virginia law to implement a five cent per plastic bag tax, one cent of which goes to the retailers distributing the plastic bags, and four cents of which goes to the locality. That money must be utilized by the locality which chooses to implement the tax for cleanup type activities. So if Gloucester were to implement such a tax, which shouldn't be necessary, but given the amount of trash, it's hard not to consider seriously. Could be utilized by the county to clean up the county and also could be used to enforce the littering laws. Since I've been here fourteen years, I have not prosecuted a single littering case, and what I'd love to, but the problem is catching the people who litter. It's very difficult. So if the county were to implement the tax, and I understand taxes are not good, nobody likes taxes, but in this case, if you were to consider it and implement it, you could utilize the tax in one or two ways. One would be to clean up and the other would be to enforce. And so if you had this two-headed dragon, perhaps we could get a hold on the problem that we are experiencing. So even though I don't get a vote, this will be my last effort in this regard. You have the opportunity to implement the five cent per plastic bag tax. Thank you.
Could you bring us some more information at the retreat?
Yes, sir, I will redistribute what I have previously redistributed, but I'll freshen it up.
Thank you. Boards and commission reports? Supervisor discussion? Mr. Crisco?
Dr. Dr. Orth was nice enough to welcome Mr. Nikosia, but I want to take this moment and congratulate Dr. Orth and, and Mr. Hudson on y'all's successful reelections.
Yours too.
Yours too. I thought we did that back in.
We may have.
May have.
It's a new year, man.
Yep. It's a new year. We have closed meeting. Mr. Wilmot, would you read us in?
Whereas the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors desires to discuss a particular subject in closed meeting during the course of its meeting of January two, twenty-twenty-four, and whereas the nature of the subject is potential acquisition disposition of an interest in real property identified as a portion of Brown Park, Tax Map Number twenty-five dash one eighteen RPC two-eight-six-nine-seven pursuant to Virginia Code Section two-point-two dash thirty-seven eleven A three, now therefore be it resolved that the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors does hereby convene in closed meeting for the purpose herein expressed pursuant to the legal authority rehearing recited.
Second.
Ms. Steele, will you poll the board?
Mr. Gibson? Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Dr. Orth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
All right, we're in closed session.
Whereas the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors has completed its discussion in closed meeting and now desires to continue its open meeting, and whereas only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting, and the only subjects heard, discussed, or considered in said closed meeting were the matters identified in the resolution by which it was convened, now therefore be it resolved that the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors does hereby reconvene in open meeting its meeting of January two, twenty-twenty-four and certifies the matters set forth in Virginia Code Section two-point-two dash thirty-seven twelve D.
Second.
Ms. Steele?
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Dr. Orth?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
All right, last item on the agenda. Adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.